All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. It's the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners meeting, August 18th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. If everybody could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. This time, we'd like to take a moment of silence for individual prayer, reflection, or mediation, meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. At this time, I'd like to do a roll call. Commissioner Dance is excused from this meeting. Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Carney.
Present.
Commissioner Richardson.
Present.
And I am Commissioner Pennington. We are here. Some additions, deletions, and modifications to our agenda. There's been a modification of Item 7I. That is the purchase and sales agreement for the 3,800 acres called the Folk H. Peterson Charitable Foundation Purchase. The staff report was updated to include a budget transfer. We discussed that at the workshop. There's a modification of Item 8D, the Beach Renourishment Maintenance Agreement. We have replaced the slip sheet with the staff report and attachments. There's a modification of Item 9C Legislative. We've added the word legislative to the subject line. And the same with 9D. That is the Ordinance on Subdivision Regulations. We added legislative to the subject line.
Is that B or C? C and D?
That's 9C, 9D.
C and D, yes.
Announcements by the Chair. Our county offices are closed Monday, September 1st, for Labor Day. Instead, we'll have our regular meeting that Wednesday, September 3rd, at 9:00 AM. The next meeting is our Joint Cities and County Workshop, which will be Wednesday, August 27th, at 5:30 PM. Ms. Petito, do we know what that county workshop is on?
Lucy was trying to confirm the agenda today with City of Flagler Beach and City of Palm Coast, so I don't have it yet.
Following our regular meeting September 3rd, we will also have a workshop with our board, the issue to be determined. And our first public budget hearing will be Thursday, September 11th, at 5:01 PM. Today, there's no recognitions, proclamations, or presentations to present. So at this time, I'd like to call Community Outreach. This is a 30-minute time period allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or topic that is not on the agenda. Each speaker allowed up to three minutes to address our commission. Speaker should approach the podium, identify yourself, and direct your comments to Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Suzy Worley. I live at 1860. Want to come right to the microphone.
Suzy Worley. I live at 1860 Black Point Road in Bonnell. I'd like to address my concerns about the reserve at Hall Creek. I realize this is a city project, but it will greatly affect everyone in Flagler County and anyone that visits it in many ways. Of course, the residents where I live in Black Point Road are deeply concerned about getting flooded even more than they are, but also affects the traffic. When they did the traffic survey, they said that if the development was fully built out at 8,000 units, it would be a total of 81,943 cars that pass through Bonnell each day. That's an increase from 8,817, or an increase of 73,126. So now, they've lowered that to 6,100, so that's 76.25% of the original documentation. So at 76.25%, that would be, bring it all the way down to 62,481. That's a lot of difference between 8,817. And it will put a lot of burden on the county to provide police services, excuse me, ambulance services, everything else. And it's really a project that's not good for our county. So I hope that if you can get involved in all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to address? Good afternoon. State your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Carly Tajmer. I'm one of the owners of East Coast Animal Hospital. We partner with Smart Rescue a lot within our county and our city. And as we build our new location, we're looking for ways to better support the animals in our community. So on the scanner, many other cities and counties do this. They have a scanning station set up throughout the county for where, after hours, people find lost pets, they can go to this scanning center and scan the pet. And they have resources available if the pet is microchipped. They can scan the QR code, go to the AHA website, and enter in the microchip number to find the owner. If the pet is not scanned, the scanning station has resources available to Lost and Found Pet Page, local rescues, so we can better identify what to do with these lost pets and get them to their owners sooner. At our new location, off of Palm Coast Parkway, sorry, Palm Coast Parkway and Old Kings, we're going to have one at our new location. It's the old Denny's Building. So, yep, that is it. Yeah, that's us. So we will have one there that us, in partnership with Smart, are going to sponsor, so anybody can come after hours and use this facility outside of our location. We'll have a microchip scanner available that's going to be tethered to it, and owners can use this as needed, or whoever finds a lost pet. What we're asking is support with the county to have one on this side of town. Once again, we will sponsor it in partnership with Smart. We just need a location that you guys would be willing to allow us to have a post very similar to this, a weatherproof box underneath with a microchip scanner attached to it, which we would provide. So I thank you guys for your consideration.
Well, thank you so much. Ms. Petito, can you have that as a takeaway? If you could provide your information to her.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to approach and speak on anything that's on the consent or not on the consent? All right. Seeing none, I'll close. Public comment brings us to our consent agenda items. Is there any consent agenda items anyone wishes to discuss but not pull at this time?
No.
No? Commissioner Richardson?
No, ma'am. I'm all set. Thank you.
Carney? Okay. All right, and now for our consent agenda items. We've discussed some of these in the workshop earlier today. Is there any that anybody wishes to pull?
No.
No? Commissioner Carney?
Nope. No, ma'am.
All right. Seeing there's none, I look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Carney, second by Mr. Hanson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, we move past the consent agenda. Let's see who we're up against there. Mr. Seager, I believe. Mr. Seager, Item 8A, Consideration of the Appointment of Seven Members to the Airport Master Plan Updated Working Group. This item was also discussed in our workshop today, just for reference.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Roy Seager, Director of the Flagler Executive Airport. Tonight, so back in, let's give a little history on this. In February 2025, the Flagler County Board of Commissioners approved the formation of the Airport Master Plan Update Working Group through the adoption resolution 25-11. The Airport Master Plan Working Group is an advisory board of the county commission and will be subject to the Sunshine Law. However, like other advisory boards, final decision-making authority with respect to the master plan remains with the county commission. Under the board's resolution, the working group will consist of seven members with expertise in any of the following areas: aviation, business and economic development, urban or regional planning, infrastructure and growth management, and commercial real estate. Earlier today, or right before the meeting, I gave you a ballot. There's 11 people on there. You need to pick seven of them, please. So if you would, take your time right now to go ahead and pick those. Would you like, and I don't know, I know I've seen a couple of them.
I was going to ask, is anybody here that has applied for this board, and would anybody like to come forward first before we vote? I see Dr. Conklin. We'll let each of you come up if you'd like to, or just say your name, or tell us anything you'd like to. Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. Thank you for the consideration. I applied, given the background that I have with Emory Riddle Aeronautical University, managing basically all of the K-12 education programs throughout the country now at this point, and meeting with a number of aviation industry businesses. There are so many that we come across and meet that are looking to relocate, that are looking for smaller communities, smaller airports, to establish or open up businesses. And there have been multiple times where I have been like, have you thought about Flagler County? And it just, when the opportunity arose, I thought between the experience that I've had with the school board, with working with policy groups, with doing regional planning, statewide planning, and then throwing in the aviation experience and background, I thought it would be a good fit. And in additional way, a little bit unique, a little bit different than school board, but to continue to give back in public service.
Thank you so much, Ms. Conklin. Any questions for her?
I have a quick question. Doctor, you clicked Other. So can you explain why you clicked Other?
I think that that might have been additional experience, but the Other was school board experience, policy experience, legislative experience, and really regional and statewide planning.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Sir, would you like to come up? We'll get through you both. Come on up. It's okay.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Turlington. I've been here before, and I'm pleased and happy and grateful that you all appointed me to the Industrial Development Authority. Connected with this, I'm not going to repeat the CPA and law firm experience that I told you about last time for your appointment, but I do believe that it would be helpful to not only this committee for the airport, but also for the Industrial Development Authority as well, to have a common member that can communicate and liaise back and forth. And since you have been gracious enough to appoint me to the Other Board, if you think that that would be helpful to you and to both of the Board and the committee, I would be available and glad to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Turlington. Any questions for him? I think everyone's, no? Okay, it's your turn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mark Assick. I have been retained by one of the developers on the south side of the airport to handle the leasing for some of their property that they intend to enter into ground lease. I have extensive history at Deland Airport, and so I've been fortunate to see that smart development over there, as well as Sanford International Airport. We do a lot of the leasing work out there. So I appreciate your consideration.
You live in Volusia County, correct?
I do. Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for him? None? All right. Thank you so much, sir. Anyone else that's applied? All right. Seeing none, so you're looking for a consensus majority vote, which in the instance of four is...
Correct. So, so, yeah, so we got 11, got 11 people on the ballot. You need to select seven of them. And then once you select that, give me the ballot, I will tally it up and then let you know the results. Start playing the Jeopardy song.
Are we limited to just seven?
Yes.
Roy? Are we limited to just seven? That's why I want to make sure. Okay.
And we determined at the workshop that it was not a requirement to live in Flagler County.
And must all those positions be filled for those reasons? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Is it a requirement that all those positions must be filled at this time? Do you know of that?
There's nothing required such. I mean, if they're going to be still vacant, they're going to have to be eventually filled. However, if it's, if you're going to have a number of vacancies, which are going to result in the working group not having a sufficient quorum to meet, then we're going to be back at square one, though.
Okay. Because there's some that have only got one check, and that makes it a little more confusing.
We'll have to then come up to the tally whether there's going to be enough of...
Each position.
If there be enough votes to then render whether there'll be a sufficient quorum for them to proceed forward.
Okay.
If I may just advise, because in order to comply with the Sunshine Law while he tabulates the votes, that the vote be stated by each commissioner, who did each commissioner vote for on their ballot, so that it is placed on the record and it is in the public.
I was just going to say, there was no place for our name on the ballot. So if he wants...
They're on there. He printed them. He printed it with...
So were you just going to give it back to us to read?
No, he can read. He can state Commissioner so-and-so has elected to. That way, I can have a clear record as to who voted for who, and it's not a secret ballot.
This is probably a good time to introduce you, Mr. Rodriguez, to the 5 o'clock.
Yes.
This is our new county attorney, Michael Rodriguez, on his first meeting today, so... I know. I'm going to deduct this from that time I told you we were going to be done at.
See, what I was afraid of was going to happen, that we would have...
Eight or nine.
We'd have, yeah, eight or nine with the same, but luckily, we don't have to take those last couple and revote. So you have, so I'll just read off, so I'll read off, Donald Turlington was four votes, Ray Ricky was four votes, Charles Rossell was three votes, Bruce Parker was three votes, Bill Lyon was three votes, Richard Klump was three votes, and Colleen Conklin was three votes. So that's our seven.
Okay. And then, for the record, you'll read each commissioner's vote?
Okay. I'll start off with Commissioner Hanson, Richard Klump, Donald Turlington, Richard Melby, Charles Rossell, Ray Ricky, Rick Lehman, Bill Lyon. Commissioner Pennington, Richard Klump, Colleen Conklin, Donald Turlington, Bruce Parker, Charles Rossell, Ray Ricky, Bill Lyon. Commissioner Carney, Richard Klump, Colleen Conklin, Donald Turlington, Bruce Parker, Ray Ricky, Bill Lyon, Mark Assick. Commissioner Richardson, Colleen Conklin, Donald Turlington, Richard Melby, Bruce Parker, Charles Rossell, Ray Ricky, and Mark Assick. Any questions regarding the voting of the Airport Master Plan Working Group?
Any questions for Mr. Seager?
Could you, after all saying all those names, could you say the final without the count? Is that okay? Just the names again, I'm sorry.
The final again, she's asking.
She's trying to confuse me. I got it.
That's right.
So we got Donald Turlington, Charles Rossell, Ray Ricky, Bruce Parker, Bill Lyon, Richard Klump, Colleen Conklin.
Thank you so much. Question, when do we see the Master Plan Working Group beginning?
So we're waiting for one more piece. As you remember, you just voted for the last piece from FDOT. We're waiting for them to get that back to me. Once we have that, we'll have all the funding in place, and then we will, we'll put a, we have a, we have a schedule already put together. We just haven't put the dates, actually, you know, we know many times we're going to meet with them, all the different working times we're going to meet with them, all the meetings, but we just haven't put the dates to it yet, because we're just waiting. But it will start in September.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Seager.
I want to thank all the applicants who did put their name in. Appreciate your interest in being part of the help group for this committee, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm very encouraged that we've been getting more applicants through all the boards.
Great applicants, great applicants.
Yeah, that's very good. All right, we're moving to, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. We talked at the workshop about, along with the master plan, working on the business plan and the upgrade to the policies and procedures. I did have a quick chance to talk with Roy. Roy? Roy, don't run away. I had a chance to talk to Roy in between, and I just wanted to ask him to update you on what happens with the business plan. As Mrs. Petito said, it, you really don't do the business plan before the master plan.
Right.
So Roy's going to announce that we also have funding for the master, for the business plan as well.
Right. So what happened initially, I know part of the, part of the airport master plan, typically during airport master plan, you can do a business plan. As we know, the airport master plan can anywhere from 15 to 18 months get completed. And then, at the end of the master plan, is when you would do a business plan. Well, initially, when we're going to do the business, we do the airport master plan, it was going to be funded by the FDOT. And I was going to fund the fuel farm with some bill money I had from the FAA. Well, the FAA, when I went to them to say, I want to use this money, my, over a million dollars, to do this project, they said, well, you, this is a stupid FAA rule. If you already have a fuel farm, you can't use the money to build a new one. If I didn't have a fuel farm, I could build one. Doesn't make much sense to me, but that was the reason. So anyhow, I went to FAA, FDOT, and says, hey, instead of me using your money for the airport master plan, I can use FAA, I'll use the FAA money for the airport master plan, and will you build the fuel farm and also help with the business, business plan? And they said yes. So anyhow, it's all going to fall in place because the business plan comes after the master plan anyhow.
And then I asked about the update on the rules and regulations that haven't been upgraded since 2008. Can you just briefly talk about that?
So what we just discussed, that you were looking to actually use this working group to help with that, is that...
I don't know. I don't know how you did them in 2008. I don't know what you need from Mrs. Petito or us. I don't know.
So that could be done through consultants as well? It would be done through myself, and then through the, through a consultant firm as well, and then typically brought back, and then ultimately brought back to the board for consensus.
Do you budget for that for this year? Do you have budget money, or do you...
It's not, that is not a big, that's not a big task.
Okay. So we decided, well, I don't know if we, if we want to do it through consensus at this point, Chair, but I personally believe that it's, it's a, it's a priority. It's a high priority, and since we're making all these upgrades or changes, I think it needs to do, it needs to happen along with the master plan. So we're upgrading our policies and procedures from 2008.
Rules and regulations.
Sorry. Why do I do that? Rules and regulations, sorry.
So I believe earlier at the workshop, the attorney directed if you'd like to see that as a priority, you could make a motion, do it through a motion. So if that's something you want to do at this time, since we're on airport?
Sure. So I'd like to make a motion that the Board direct Mrs. Petito, or Jorge, I guess Mrs. Petito, to make arrangements, plan with Mr. Seager to get the rules and regulations upgraded. I would give it the same time period. I would say within 12 months.
So Ms. Carney has put in a motion to update the, the two, are the 2008 rules updated within a 12-month period. That is her motion. Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Sure. Do you want to, wish to go out to public comment right now? Do you wanna, wish to go out to public comment right now, just because we also have a public comment for item 8A. So right now, I'm gonna call public comment for item 8A, which was our appointment of the seven members. And also, Ms. Carney has made a motion that we discussed earlier in our workshop regarding airport, the rules from, I think they were 2008, we'd like to see them updated within a 12-month period. Would anybody like to come forward and discuss in public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public comment on this item, any discussion by the board on Ms. Carney's motion? And Mr. Seeger, you feel like this is something that you could accomplish in the 12-month period given?
Give me 18 months, because we, we have a lot, I'm just saying, we have a lot of projects going on at the airport right now, right? We have the Airport Master Plan, we have the design of the fuel farm, we have the design of the Wildlife Hazard Fence, we have the terminal going on. I got five pretty good projects, give me 18 months.
I'll amend my motion.
And I'll amend the second to the 18 months.
Okay. Do you feel that's a accomplishment?
That'll be sufficient.
And the funding will be there if you need it, through your airport fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a, does the second or the motion accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, just getting here for the record, that's all.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I speak low.
Any other discussion, anything from you, Mr. Hanson on the top?
No.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seeger, have a good evening. 8B, Mr. Mingle. This is an, 8B is an adoption of a resolution to vacate a portion of the plat of Hammock Moorings North. It is a subdivision in the R1 urban, single-family residential zoning district, it's located at 3544 North Ocean Shore Boulevard. The owners, I don't know if they're here tonight with us, Curtis Hilingas and Lila? No? Not here. It's all yours, Mr. Mingle.
Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner is Adam Mingle, Growth Management Director. And so the subject parcel is shown here on the graphic, this is Lot 11 in Hammock Moorings North. That red line approximates the area of the 15-foot drainage easement that's to the right-hand side, the north side, that's got the encroachment, that red line, best I can, can graphically display it for you, it's displaying that portion of the structure that's encroaching into that 15-foot drainage easement, less than 21 square feet. Again, the adage, measure twice, cut once, we've had a few of these show up before. This one is not an easement, not a setback, otherwise you wouldn't see it here, it would be a variance, it's an easement, so we have to go through a partial plat vacation. You're only vacating that par, portion of the home as constructed, encroaching into the 15-foot drainage easement. We have the consent of the HOA that's responsible for maintaining the drainage system. We also have the letter there in the packet from St. John's River Water Management District, saying they're good with this as well. So here showing the graphic, this is the plat itself, Lot 11 is in the center, that dashed line that you see that's running kind of through the number nine in the 900 space, 9,922 square feet, that's that southern edge, north would be to your left with this graphic, south would be to the right, the ocean on the other side of A1A at the top of this graphic, intercoastal at the bottom, and so that, that encroachment's occurring on that line where the nine in the 900 falls in the plat itself. And then this is the survey, and again, it's so small, you can't even see that amount of the encroachment on this, it just shows up as a, as a more solid line along the right boundary, the north boundary of the home. And that amount of encroachment, the legal description includes that and concludes then that it's 20.93 square feet of encroachment into that drainage easement. With that, we present a resolution for your consideration, again, we've got that correspondence from the HOA, correspondence from the Water Management District. We have options available for you, approve the resolution for the partial plat vacation for that portion of the encroachment within Lot 11 Hammock Moorings North. You can deny the vacation request if you choose to do so, place reasons on the record for that denial, or you can table it to a time and date certain, continue it on the record for additional information from us or the applicant. With that, I'll close, submit my report for the record, await questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll ask one more time, are the owner or petitioner here and would they like to speak?
Yeah, I don't think they were.
I don't think they're here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bring it back to the board, would anybody like to have any questions for Mr. Mingle or comments?
I just have a quick question, you're saying, is that like a roof extension?
It's actually the, the foundation.
It is foundation, so it's concrete block, block, blocking it. And would that cause any damage to the neighbors because of it?
No.
So it's just a simple addition of a bit of it? Very thin?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
A thin line of concrete?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, just under an entire block width that's there, that you're dealing with, that's the encroachment. They, they measured and then, I think, just, just their measurements were off.
Madam Chair, I move we approve and adopt the resolution to vacate a portion of the plat of Hammock Moorings North, subdivision of the R1D zoning district.
We have a motion to approve item 8B, is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Hanson, a second by Ms. Carney. I'd like to go take this item out to public comment at this time, anybody wishing to speak on item 8B, please feel free to come up at this time. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Good evening, Richard Hamilton, resident of Island Estates, which actually is just opposite this, although that's not a big issue. Six inches is no reason at all for not allowing these owners to complete their property. My one issue is a discussion, I don't know if it's relation to this, is six inches into a drainage easement doesn't sound much, but drainage easements were there, and that distance presumably there for a reason. And this is not the first time that we have an instance where people go in and go across easements. And we see it, I mean, this seems to be a mistake, we didn't hear what, exactly what happened. But we know, we have other people, some of our favorite restaurateurs in the hammock, will take the view that it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. So they do a little bit here. We have other people who do it. So, my issue is here, who screwed up? And is there any sort of penalty against them? I mean, did Adams people mess up? I doubt it, but maybe the surveyor. So, you can't just go give easements on the basis that it's just six inches. I think you have to do it for these people, I mean, you can't stop it for just a six inch, that would be ludicrous. But I think you should at least have a discussion, why this time, what happens next time, what happens next time? We have this drainage problem, we have it on Island Estates, you know that, Adam knows that, and we have other things that, if you're gonna a rule, an easement, a setback, or whatever, then how do you go about enforcing it, just a little slap on the wrist isn't perhaps enough? So that's what I wanted to comment on this. It's nothing against the hill gas and the owners, it's against this process of a little bit here, a little bit there, oh, that's okay, we're not gonna bother. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any other speakers on 8B? Sir? Good afternoon, if you could state your name for the record.
My name's Jerry Hefner, from East Platteka. I'm the general contractor on that project. They're wondering about the reason for it, there is no reason for it. You never can explain something like that, I built two other homes right in that same subdivision, had no problems whatsoever. It's a very confined lot. I know the surveyor put the four corners where they were supposed to be of the lot itself. I shot a line that the other measurements were supposed to be taken off of, so from that point, I'm not sure what happened. There was a mistake evidently in measuring, six inches on one end and three inches on the other, it's awfully hard to detect. The, it didn't show up in the, when we did the foundation survey, because the surveyor didn't put the dimensions from the north line to the slab. So we didn't recognize this issue until we're 99% asking for a CO and this issue pops up. So, there is no excuse for it, you know, I don't know what to say, it happens.
Thank you, sir, for clarifying, we appreciate it. Any other comments by the public? If not, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board, we have a motion to approve in a second.
I, can I bring up something?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Mingle, is that a new construction home?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay. And, so I guess they'll be assessed for that extra, rather than just for the plant, plans? And that's what I was wondering, would their tax, will their tax base be higher? Because if the plans say one thing, and it comes out to be more, does it get remeasured, resurveyed, or whatever? And then paying the tax differential?
Maybe I'll defer on that, I don't, I won't, that's out of my
That's out of your jurisdiction?
If Jay's at the back of the room wants to talk about that, he'll pick it up as the permit comes through. But my answer is there.
I'm just curious if he's
He, at best I know, will get the as-built and
I don't know how that happens, that's, sometimes we have properties that are already built.
Yep.
Right, so would it go on the CO, or would it go on to the actual reality?
It would be based on the, on the plans at CO, and so that, and this one not being on the tax roll now, other than as a vacant lot, the finished construction would be placed on it in its entirety.
Okay. So they will be paying their fair share at some point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments by the board? All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, 8B passes. Onto 8C, adoption of a resolution to vacate a portion of the plat of Smoke Rise subdivision, unit four in Flagler County. This is an R1, which is rural residential zoning district, 3493 Bareback Trail, and the owner, Aaron Runzavall? Are they in, are they here tonight?
I don't believe so, they may be.
Mr. Mingle?
Thank you, ma'am. And this one, oddly enough, is also Lot 11, this one's not based on any construction, this is a request, the owners come in, bought a developed lot, and it has at the rear of each of these, in Smoke Rise Unit Four, a 40-foot wide reserved area. Not reserved as an easement, on the plat, it listed, it's listed under the general notes as drainage, utilities, and road purposes. And so with this, you know, we've looked at it and we said, okay, what exactly was this intended for? You can see there to the, to the east, to the right, you know, there's several areas where there's been encroachment. And so we're looking at it going, permitted and maybe not permitted, we didn't run all that down with this. But legitimately, over the years, you know, that, this, this hasn't really been used, it hasn't been reserved, it's not been something that we've had any interest in. The dedication was made to the public for road purposes. And so this particular owner's come in and said, I'd like to vacate that. Realize that this is effectively a piecemeal vacation, but his is the application we have in front of us now. I've included this graphic, just so you can see kind of parcels to the north, you can see Relay Road. And then this is the plat for Smoke Rise Unit Four, and what had been those two tracks that I mentioned in the staff report that were there, you know, you can see a reserved area, an easement referred to still here as 20-foot wide private road to Parcel B in Lot 15. You can see the same for, in that east side of Lot One, for access to Dr. Levin's Parcel A. And so there was reserved areas, reserved roadways, where the 40-foot at the rear of each of these wouldn't have provided anyone access. They, these other parcels to the north that were not platted through Unit Four, still had access reserved to them. And then now, what's happened is that the access for subdivided Parcel A, you can see it back here, it's all through an extension off of Relay Road. And so now, those lots are accessed to the north anyway, they're, they're not using the access through Lot One or through Lot 15. They're all coming in off of Pinto, and then using an easement that extends off of, off of rodeos, how they get to their parcels. So our piece that we always have to talk about is, is anyone gonna be restricted from access to their parcels? If this vacation goes through as parcel plat vacation, short answer is no, with this. We had the consent letters provided by the utility companies here as part of this. Because of this mentioning the road, it's a little different, we have to go through a little extra language in the resolution, I also have to publish another notice after this that talks about vacating a roadway. But in effect, this was never a road, has really no potential for us to have it considered as a road in the public road network. So with this, again, this is the graphic that was part of what was sent out, showing generally the depiction of that 40-foot area at the back of Lot 11. Again, offer for your consideration, approval of the resolution, vacating that 40-foot area designated for drainage, utility, and road purposes at the rear of Lot 11, then Smoke Rise Unit Four. You could deny this request, state the reasons for denial on the record, please, or you can continue this to a time and date certain for additional information provided by us or the applicant. With that, I'll close again, submit report for the record, await any questions or comments. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm just confirming, again, the applicant's not here to speak. Doesn't appear so. Any questions or comments from the board on this one? It's a little much there.
I have a motion to adopt the resolution to vacate a portion of the plat for Smoke Rise subdivision, unit four, Flagler County, Florida, in subdivision, A subdivision in the R1.
Second.
A motion and second. Ms. Richardson, was there a comment you'd like to make?
I'm just wondering, it says it's for a road, and those two parcels above, that are big parcels, are those owned by independent people?
Yes. Yes, several owners now, and so you can see those parcel lines that are here on this, A's been broken into four separate pieces, I think, B, off to the west, I think maybe at least two, maybe it's just a single one, but you've easily went from two to as many as, as five, maybe six.
How far is the main corridor from this spot?
Main roadway, or?
Main roadway.
Um, you're, you're coming, Pinto, just off of the graphic on the right-hand side is county-maintained, Bareback's also county-maintained.
Okay. I'm just wondering if in the future that would change, and then if they wanted to build a road across that, that road, that doesn't have a name right now, just numbers, would that be a problem for us later?
I think the biggest impediment would be the construction that's already happened there within that 40-foot
Right.
that's happened, and for whatever reason, you know, it's easy to
Those may have to be being removed for that factor.
Would happen, yes, ma'am.
So that would stay with, that would, that, that, what it's made for would stay with the property regardless of what we vote today?
Well, the 40-foot, you would be vacating that, and so you would be pulling out that reservation, that chunk on Lot 11. And so, effectively, if there was ever any intent at putting a road at the rear of these parcels, you would stop that through this vacation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing no questions, I'm gonna go ahead and go to public comment for item 8C, the adoption of a resolution to vacate a portion of the plat at Smoke Rise subdivision. Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I bring it back to the board, I have a motion to approve by Ms. Carney, and a second by Mr. Hanson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes for 8C. We're getting through it here, 8D, this one is the beach renourishment maintenance agreement and First Amendment to perpetual easement with the Hammock Dune Owners Association. We had this requested by Ansley Key and Sean Moilen, who will be speaking to it, I believe, here comes Hamid. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair. Hamid Tabassian, county engineer, the item before you is for beach nourishment maintenance agreement between the Hammock Dune Owner Association and the county, and the First Amendment to the perpetual easement that was executed back in '23. The perpetual easement agreement makes the county responsible for the maintenance of the 2.3 miles of the Hammock Dune reach. And with that, they are providing $570,000 towards maintenance of that area. So, we request your consideration of the approval of these two items.
Okay, so I'm, I'll go ahead and let the board speak first, any comments, Commissioner Hanson?
No, we've worked on this for better part of a year to get this done, and Al was a big part of this, and Sean, and we finally got, got an agreement on everything, so this is the final step.
Commissioner Carney? Mr. Richardson?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. So, it was 570,000, right, from the HOA to be provided? Okay, so it was 570,000, right, from the HOA to be provided?
Yes.
And I'm really familiar with it, so I feel like we're not giving enough public comment on it from the board, but we've worked on this for quite some time, back and forth. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion and go out to public.
Mrs. Chairman, I move that we approve the breach, beach re-nourishment maintenance agreement and First Amendment to perpetual easement with Hammock Dunes Owners Association.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion to approve by Mr. Hanson and a second by Ms. Richardson. At this time, I'd like to call for public comment for item 8D, beach re-nourishment maintenance agreement and First Amendment to perpetual easement with the Hammock Dunes Owners Association. Anyone like to come up and comment? We have a lot of you here, are you sure? You didn't just come to watch, right? Mr. Hamilton, sir.
Our speaker of the day.
I told you I'd, I'm back. I'd hope that perhaps Mr. Davis might have had a chance to address this first. I'm only speaking personally, though I, sorry, it's Richard Hamilton, resident of Island Estates, which is technically part of Hammock Dunes and part of this issue. The comment I wanted to make is, this is a good agreement for the county, it moves things forward, so I don't have a particular problem with the, with the agreement itself. What I do have a problem with the manner in which it's being done. It was only this morning that we received, that there was an actual discussion in Hammock Dunes about this, to approve it. So Mr. Davis can come up here and say he's perfectly right, the Hammock Dunes Board has approved it, that does not mean the Hammock Dunes community has approved it, and as you are aware, there is an ongoing lawsuit between Island Estates and the Hammock Dunes, not just related to this, but related to a lot of other issues where the Hammock Dunes Board has, in our view, exceeded its authority. So we just had this discussion, we looked at the wording, some of our legal experts pointed out, there were some issues that by making an amendment to an easement agreement without amending, without going back and saying what in the original easement agreement you're changing, you now have inconsistencies in the easement agreement. That's an issue for, for your attorneys, and it's up to them to assure you that you have no ongoing liability. The other issue that we want to sort of raise, and will come up, not necessarily today, but more, is that this is a commitment from wonderful homeowners associations, and we assume that you're going to get that from others, to pay an amount of money. At the same time, you are talking about MSBU's and MSTUs. Couple of months ago, we thought we had an agreement with the sales tax and a pretty small amount, and that's gone away, now we're back on a situation where the homeowners association is going to try and assess owners, you're going to do an MSTU and an MSBU. As of today, I haven't even seen it yet, I've seen a photo, we received a notice in a mail saying that there is an MSBU taxing district in place, zero this year, but it's there, and the terms and conditions will be discussed on September 11th at a public meeting. You can express a lot, expect a lot of people at that meeting, especially if you're now talking about having a funding from the homeowners associations, of which I'm going to be paying about $400, $500, it's not a big deal for me, but I'm going to be paying it. So am I going to pay the MSTU or the MSBU, I'm going to get some credit? Mr. Davis made a big point the last, two weeks ago about how he's paid for his own seawalls, is he going to get a credit against the MSU? The, the whole detail of this MSBU still has to be thrashed out. The fact that we're now talking about much larger sums of money are probably going back into a legal and a litigation issue that you wanted to avoid. So I don't know whether you have to approve this today or not, or wait till September 11th when you're discussing the MSBU's and MSTUs, but that's an initial comment I'd like to give to you. Thank you.
Ms. Petito, would you like to address the letter that went out today regarding the MSBU? Mr. Richard, or Mr. Hamilton is, I've gotten a couple of messages today about it.
Certainly. As we talked about in previous workshops and meetings, there was a, a time certain deadline that the letter had to be mailed as part of the ongoing process with the budget and the creation of the MSBU, which we started December of 2024. Although we're not levying anything this year, there is a requirement to notify the people that reside within that district that we intend not to levy anything. The reference to the September 11th date is because that's the date of your first public hearing, and that's when you start setting what those assessments will be as part of the budget. If I had a crystal ball, the people in attendance would hear that you're levying nothing, you're not levying anything, so there isn't going to be a letter today and then a new amount introduced on September 11th, the amount is zero. The agreement that you have in front of you today is a temporary stopgap that allows the area to be eligible for FEMA CATG, and the portion that they're paying is a portion of what's due at the local level. It's intended that, that agreement that you have with the Hammock Dunes Owners Association, the funding that's currently coming from the HOA will be replaced when we go to do the MSBU. We have met, I believe we've already discussed this as well, we've already met with outside engineering committee or a group that is looking at the apportionment of the MSBU. We know the dollar amount that we need to levy, they need to do the scientific work to decide what benefit each property is getting. So they will have at some point next year, a flat rate based on the geographic area that they reside, whether they decide to implement CCCL or east or west of A1A, or whether they treat everybody the same. And then what is that cost, what is that benefit that each property is receiving? So it's kind of a two-pronged approach. We have our outside engineering firm working on that now, we anticipate it to take a few months. The timing of that will go into effect next year during the budget process, but this is the path that we've talked about for months, this is just a small portion of it, so hope that helps.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on item 8D, beach re-nourishment and maintenance agreement and First Amendment to the perpetual easement with the Hammock Dunes Owners Association? Quiet, we're all here for something else? Okay, Ms. Carney, any other thing you'd like to add to that, or to this agreement?
No. I'm sorry, Mr. Hamilton wasn't here, but we, this was the most efficient way, based on the fact that we had already written a resolution to do this, this was the most efficient way to get it done, even though it's a zero, it will stay a zero for '26, the, '25, '26. The levy, like Mrs. Petito said, after we get the studies in and we get some more data, we're also working with Flagler Beach to work on an MSBU for Flagler Beach. So this will vamp back up again after the budget process is done, but we had to get, it was more efficient to get it done this way as opposed to try to reintroduce this whole concept again next year. So that's why the letters went out, the board did agree to let the letters go out at zero, and Mr. Moilen has reviewed all of this to get us set up for the MSBU. So I, I wish that information could get out, but if they come here on the 11th, they'll hear the same thing, the residents, it's a zero. We can't change it, and that was the deal with, with the deadline, is we can't change it, but we had to go ahead and do something so it was zero.
All right, seeing Mr. Hamilton. I don't know.
Sorry, spoken.
I'm sorry for double dipping, but one specific question, do you have a date when the county actually approved the MSBU? All I have a date is back in December, where you approved the intention to set up, but I do not have any date where you actually approved an MSBU. I see discussions, but no approval. Thank you.
We'll have, I can recall it, I just can't recall the, the month.
Our last meeting, minute.
We believe it was December 2nd of 2024.
That was the resolution, correct? That was the resolution.
I believe so, I was going to pull it up.
We'll make sure.
And then after the resolution, the county was required to notify the state, a letter had to be received by January 20th, I believe, but the, the letters went out to the state to notify the state that we, that we.
Intend.
Intend to levy. So it was an intent. We could not get a number that, we couldn't get to a number because we didn't have the time or the study to get to the number. That's why we levied zero.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Hanson and a second by Ms. Richardson, we've been out to public comment, this is, I'm going to take a vote for item 8D, the beach re-nourishment maintenance agreement, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes item 8D. We're moving on now to item number nine for public hearings. This is a quasi-judicial process, audience should obviously refrain from clapping or shouts of disagreement. Our time limit's right now, the staff has a 10-minute or less presentation, the applicant 15 minutes, public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker or five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of a group. Item 9A, quasi-judicial, this is a request for approval of a PUD site development plan in the PUD district, the request for approval of a PUD site development plan for West Lake 6A, a 57-unit, single-family subdivision on Sterling Bridge Drive, I believe this owner is Intervest at Plantation Bay, Richard Smith. At this time, I'd like to ask if we've had any conversations with the applicant or anyone of, Mr. Hanson?
I have not.
Ms. Carney?
None.
Ms. Richardson, I've had none either. Mr. Mangle?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director. This is unit 6A and how it's oriented in the overall Plantation Bay DRI development, and you can see just west of Sterling Bridge, that canal that runs north to south is the western boundary, that's the one that eventually runs up beside the Holly Travel Park, I believe, and so that's the, the west boundary. And then to the north, further to the north would be Old Dixie, I think the, the power lines are what you see there, coming in and then turning south to the, to the east. US1 there at the, at the bottom right corner, gives you a little bit of orientation to this. Then larger map showing the mixed-use low intensity for the entirety of the boundaries of the DRI, the, the development of regional impact and where this unit 6A sits in relation to that, and then all of its zoned planned unit development, all within Zone X, outside of a special flood hazard area, mix of soils, we've got a little bit, I think that's of Malabar fine sand and I think that's the, oh, I'm sorry, Valkyria fine sand, no, no real concerns here with wetlands, we do have, the area that we've designated here was a part of a pond that's presently in the limits of the development, that's going to be recontoured as part of this development of 6A. And then here's that overall master plan map, map H, and this shows the area of 6A in what we would refer to as a cluster map, that shows the different developments that are underway, those that have been approved, and several that are yet to come. And so it's 57 detached, single-family residential lots that are part of this. This particular area is actually designated for much more density, as many as 145 dwelling units, based on that one to four dwelling units per acre. Density that we have here proposed is at 1.5 dwelling units per acre. And then this PUD site development plan step is a required step, this has been reviewed by the Board of, by the Planning and Development Board, which recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Now it's your job then to approve the ordinance. You'll see that structure that we've had for some time where we have the site plan come in, and then along with that, we have adoption of develop, dimensional development requirements that are specific to these units, we've been adding to that master ordinance, 6A is that latest one of these, and so here's this graphic that you'll see that gives better detail on the configuration of the lots. Again, that Strickland Canal along the west boundary, the east boundary being Sterling Bridge Road. And then these are those dimensional requirements I mentioned, and so no real surprises here, we do have a five-foot side setback, which has been done here several times prior with previous units. And then we do have a detail here that's mentioned at the very bottom, unit 6A has specific developer commitments, it has a series of landscape graphics, they're specific to the lot types, and those have been incorporated into the, into this development agreement iteration. Example of that is this one, again, I think there's seven of them total, I believe, and so this is one of those graphics out of that that gives you, this one, I think, is for the cottage detail on the lot, Main Boulevard, it says 80-foot, I think is what this one looks like, and so you'll have several iterations of these that are incorporated into the actual planned unit development text. With that, we have options available to you, one is to approve the ordinance with the site development plan and the dimensional requirements for unit 6A. Second would be to deny, if you choose to deny, place reasons on the record for the denial, and the third would be to continue this to a time and date certain for either staff or the applicant to come back with additional information on this at a subsequent meeting. With that, I'll close, await any questions or comments from the board, thank you. And the applicant is present, by the way, I think you saw Mr. Smith get up, he's, he's ready for any questions you have on the part of the developer.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Mangle. I'll bring this item back to the board, is anybody like to have any conversation, comments, questions? The applicant is here.
Can you just share with me, you said that's on the east side of this map here, is what you called the bridge?
Sterling Bridge Road.
Sterling Bridge Road.
Drive.
And what's on the, what's on the side behind it? Where it's blank right now? Maybe you could point it out to me.
Yeah, I think it, I think that's predominantly wetland on that part that's, that's beyond its conservation.
So it's surrounded by wetland?
Yep, so on the, on the east side of Sterling Bridge, it's all wetland.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, I'm sorry, it shows it here, this is the, this is the graphic, so if you look there, that area, just to, just to the offset of center, PFO 1/4C, that's a, that's a big wetland area.
Right.
PFO 1C is the big one.
1C.
That's the big one.
Yes, sir.
The 1C.
We'll have public comment in just a moment where you can speak on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the answer.
Any other questions or comments right now? Okay, we have, we have some people who'd like to speak on it, so would you like me to go out before we make a motion? All right, I'd like to open up item 9A for public comment, this is a quasi-judicial request for approval of a PUD site plan. Please state your name with your approach.
Actually, Madam, Madam Chair, the applicant has his, makes her presentation.
That's right. I'm new here, so.
Dick Smith, ICI Homes 2379 Belville Road, I have nothing to add, but I am, am here to answer questions.
I appreciate it, there might be some from the audience, I might pull you back up here in just a minute, sir.
Good evening, Jane Jenkins, Plantation Bay, first of all, you're doing a nice job, man, and it's nice to look over at the attorney seat and see someone nice and young and handsome with a full head of hair. On the side of 9A, on 9A, I've got, I've, I've watched Plantation Bay grow and grow and grow. I would like this tabled. ICI has never been turned down. The only thing they got turned down on is when they wanted to knock down the wall that we pay to maintain, and Harriet and I saved the entrance wall, they want to put a club wall on FDOT property. Here are my issues why I want it tabled. They have already had seven amendments to this plat since 2007, seven, one in 2007, 2016, 21 and 22. They say in their application that water will be provided by FGUA. I'm trying to get confirmation, they have provided no proof, and we're having issues with FGUA. So I want it tabled until FGUA minimum can provide, that they can provide the water, because we just had a lift station that was replaced after 12 years, when ICI never did it, and the county never did it. Okay, they're going to plan for these extra units. They're going to plan for these extra units. The setbacks, you know, I'm sorry, I don't want to insult people, but Adam, I don't know how you could approve a five-foot setback between neighbors because if you were in a swimming pool and you needed an ambulance to get you out, God help you. I think the five-foot side setbacks, as a realtor, as a broker, as a licensee, I think it's disgraceful. I think there should be a minimum of 10-foot setbacks between houses, side setbacks. As far as 20-foot driveways, you, this is outrageous. My driveway's 105 feet when they really built homes. Anything under 35 feet, it's ridiculous. They're squeezing in these homes. We don't know about the water and there are no amenities. A passive park where you can take your dog to poop? But, but ICI will not make amenities because they want you to join their private club. No benches, no play, we have one playground in all of Plantation Bay that is three and a half miles from my house and it's in Volusia County. Okay? It's in Volusia County and it's got parking spaces for three vehicles out of 2,500 homes. I would like this tabled at minimum until you get this water issue cleared up if you ignore all my other requests. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Yud. Are there any other public members that would wish to comment on item 9A? Now would be your last. It's okay, you can go ahead and approach behind him. Hi, how are you, sir?
Hi. My name is Rob Tapp and I live at 345 Sterling Bridge Drive. The plot map that was up there, can that come back up again without the timer? Because I have a, yes.
There we go.
So right now, I presume what I'm looking at on the east side of the plot is Sterling Bridge and those are potential homes on Sterling Bridge overlooking the pond? Okay, so right now, you walk down Sterling Bridge, you have a park setting, beautiful fountain, and you look across at woods on the other side of the pond. I can't imagine, besides myself, because this is the first time I've seen this, people walk, there's a beautiful walking path that goes around that pond and goes through the, excuse me, goes through the woods. That alone is going to infuriate people on Sterling Bridge Drive. Not to mention, they just clear cut 55 acres across from where I live and maybe, it's been two years since it's been cleared out, maybe there's six homes that are built. And there's 131-plus home sites yet to be built out. So my concern is overextending, putting in more real estate when we haven't sold what we have. And I would go along with a fine woman who said, can we just put the brakes on Sterling Bridge, West Lake, until some of these homes sell out and water issues can be resolved, which is a huge problem in our community? And so that would be, I'm seconding what she said and that is to just put this on hold. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do your approach, just say your name, please. Thank you.
Melissa Spazano. I'm at 416 Sterling Bridge. And I have to agree with everything both speakers have said about the water and the five feet and whatnot coming into there. It's a beautiful view when you make the right onto Sterling Bridge. It's beautiful, the walking path is what people, you know, they're selling that when, you know, they're saying, look at the beautiful walking paths. The problem is, we just had a home built next to ours, basically five feet, my husband will agree. We have now flooding between our homes that we can't even put sprinklers on and I want to see what ICI is going to do about that. I can't even walk out between two homes. You walk out, you soak your foot into, anytime it rains a little bit, they're building so much on top of one another. I don't know what we're going to do. This is a brand-new home I've worked my life for and they're just overbuilding. They're not even selling the ones up near Route 1 when you first coming off of Bay Drive. And the gentleman was correct, there's, where I live, all the land across, it was, oh, where they were going to, it's all selling, nothing. So they're just overbuilding really quickly. And I don't know who's going to be responsible for putting a drain between our homes, but a lot of people experience this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Savannah Brinkworth. Do I need to provide my address?
No.
Okay. I'm so used to being out at this point. So I wasn't really planning on speaking about anything, but, you know, I will have to, I know everyone's kind of, the few speakers that have talked about this are very against it, but I will have to say, in regards of like comparing this to the reserve at Haw Creek, this is actually a lot smarter development. Now, as far as the five-foot boundaries, that's probably not such a great idea. I think I do agree with that one lady, maybe they ought to be reconsidered, widen those up because if an emergency does happen, you want to make sure there's enough space for an emergency response. Now, I will kind of go back on the flip side of what I just said. Florida, we really are being developed at an unprecedented rate. It's, it's becoming, I personally think, a very large problem. And, and our county, we still have a lot of green space left. And that community, Plantation Bay, you know, they already have quite a bit of development around them. I just wonder, where is the wildlife going to go? At some point, we reach a point where we've cemented everything and we've destroyed why we live here and why we like it and why people move here. So I kind of just ask you to kind of consider that a little bit when you're making your decision. And also the fact that I looked up recently how many homes were for sale in our county and it's pretty close to like 2,000 homes actively for sale. So I'll end on that note. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. For those who were not here at the workshop today, just, just to your point, this board tonight has made a motion to purchase 4,000 acres of wildlife corridor solely in Western that will be put aside for conservation and animals. So we're, our board is doing the best we can to get as much as we can into conservation. So, so that was like a milestone for us tonight. $6 million, but it came from the state. But we are doing our best for that. I'd like the applicant, maybe if he could come and address some of the concerns that the public had. Mr. Smith?
Certainly. Couple things, just want to highlight what Adam mentioned and that is technically on this particular development, we could have put up to 145 units there. We're putting 57. 1.5 units per acre, very low density. We've chosen to put bigger units there because that's what the market is demanding and we're trying to meet, meet that demand. We have increased front setbacks where necessary on those 14 lots that do front Sterling Bridge Drive. The area across the street, east side of Sterling Bridge Drive, it is a wetland that's already in conservation easement to St. John's River Water Management District. There are many areas within Plantation Bay that are already conserved or preserved through conservation easements. Our overall density when we're done is going to be close to, will be less than one, one unit per acre based on all of the areas that we are preserving. So this is smart development, it's condensed, we have three entrances, we, we feel like this is smart development. And yes, we do have 45 holes of golf, we do have a private club and we've got a fitness facility, so we do have plenty of amenities. That's all I have to add.
Can you address the comments? What about water approval by FGUA?
I'm not familiar with, I do know they're making, they're continuing to make improvements on the water plant. They own and they operate that separately, but I, so I don't have anything specific to offer to that.
Do you know if it's been?
It has been approved for this particular phase, yes. They have, they have agreed to serve water to this particular phase.
And the walking paths that people mentioned, will they be disrupted, the walking paths or recon?
The one path along Sterling Bridge will be disrupted and it, but it will be reconstructed as those homes are, are constructed.
So you plan on reconstructing walking paths? Will that be just for this PUD or for all the community to use?
Well, we have, we have a sidewalk network that we are building in phases on the main roads and this particular road already has that walking path. And with those 14 lots that front on Sterling Bridge, we will be reconstructing that as those homes are built.
And then you may or may not know this, but I think it was mentioned that there had been several amendments to this particular site. Is it that your density is getting less and less better or is it?
No, actually, I think Adam can, can answer that. Your process requires every time we do a phase that we do an amendment to the PUD. So that's part of your process. It's, it has nothing to do with not, not significantly part of our changes, it's just our continued development and the nuances of each new phase.
Questions from the board?
The five-foot setback, we have negotiated that ad nauseam. The only thing I would ask is, are you making sure that you can't put air conditioners on the same side, two homes? Have an air conditioner on the right side of the home and an air conditioner on the left side of the home, completely blocking the access to the back? You've, you've been very cooperative in the past to make sure that doesn't happen. Are you going to do the same here?
If, if there are some accommodations that we're making, I'm not familiar with that, but if you've got some suggestions, we certainly would consider.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a positive response to Adam, at least on that, because you've done it for us in the past, so you don't completely block that, that deal. The other thing I was alarmed about the, is that one of your projects where they clear cut the area and then they didn't build any homes?
No, no, we are, we are actively selling and building homes in there and we've got quite a few sales, they're, they're correct. We've got, probably got half a dozen that are under construction now with many more on the, on the, on the horizon. So we are actively selling in there and doing very well, quite honestly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I have, I have a question too.
Yes.
I wish my mic was on. There you go. That's a very big problem that people are having in other parts of the county. I'm sure you're aware of it. And I think most of it comes from the land. Somebody mentioned about the lot being squishy. And of course, we know new sod does take some time to adhere to the ground in Florida. That, I've lived that my whole life. But are we, are we leveling the lots across in those developments or are we just going with different hides? I mean, is there any way to protect that from happening with the draining?
Yeah, there is, I'm not, I'm not familiar with her specific situation. Perhaps I can speak with her after, after this, this item. But we do have a very specific lot grading plan that our builders are supposed to adhere to and, and it should be working. We're required to raise the houses at least 18 inches above the crown of road. And then the grading of the lots is supposed to be done such that it gets the water either to the, to the roadway into the drainage system and/or to, if it's a lakefront lot, generally the, the back half of the lot will drain towards the lake. So with regard to her specific condition, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. And it, and the five-feet side, side, I should be able to speak, side setback? That would make it 10 feet between the two properties. There's not going to be anything attached.
And that is a minimum.
They're not zero lot line, they're not L-shaped.
That's correct. And that is a minimum. Many, many homes have more than that, but that is a minimum, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll just comment on density. Just for the, this is not a lecture on land use or land development by any means. I'm not an expert. But it would behoove anyone that lives in Plantation Bay to grab ahold of the Flagler County Property Appraisers website and make sure you know who owns all that land and most of it is ICI. So you will see ICI come before us because most of the new development is in Flagler County up until the entire area is developed. These are their development rights. They bought this property, they PUD'd it, they master-planned it. It is their right to develop it. Our jobs, unfortunately, I want as much green and as much wetlands in there as I can find because they can't develop the wetlands. But as far as developing the up, the upland, that is on the owner of the property. They own it, they bought it, they have rights to it. It's zoned. So get to know your area that you live around because maybe not in my lifetime, but certainly down the road, this whole area will be built out. So we can't stop it. The only way to stop it is to own it. And that's why Commissioner Pennington said how proud we are today that we were able to purchase almost 4,000 acres. We do believe in conservation on this board and we're trying the best we can. But we cannot deny landowners their rights. It's against the law. So when we, when we pass this this evening, we, we, we are doing this because the landowner has followed the procedure, Adam has reviewed it, and it's time to let them develop it. Whether they sell one house or 300 houses, that's not our problem. We're not in sales and marketing. We basically are giving them their land rights. We're both in real estate and we can tell you for sure, we know how much inventory is out there. But this is ICI, this is their legal right, this is the way they operate. Whether you like the homes, you don't like the homes, you don't like the sidewalks, you bought in a, in a restricted, deeded area and unfortunately, you're going to see growth just as long as everybody else up here sees growth. And I'm happy with the density. I'm glad to see that you're building on more lots because for those of us that sell in Palm Coast all day long, people don't want 80 by 125. They want a half acre, a three-quarter acre. This is a good alternative. Flagler Beach, they're postage stamped at 50 by 80. So guys, it just depends on where the project is. So thank you for the, the density and I do worry about the water. We, I do have family in Plantation Bay. I think it behooves your project and your developer team, I know you're in, not in that team, but to make sure that the water is, they're staying on top of that water because it is going to become an issue and lots of residents here will tell you that it's an issue. So they see more people consuming more water and they just want answers. So it's mostly comments, not questions. That's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, it is curb and gutter.
It is, yes.
Yeah, and where's it going to drain to?
It'll drain to the lake that we're enlarging. We're actually connecting two lakes and enlarging the overall stormwater system.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I think the applicant's addressed a lot of the concerns tonight. Water's approved, walking path will be eventually placed back, it sounded like. It's less than one unit per acre, which is, may they all go that way going forward. Adam, remind me again, it's been a while, when we talked about AC units staggered, my ever chief was involved in it. It's been a couple of years.
Yeah, the, the objective, especially when you have those, those five-foot setbacks is that, and just what Commissioner Hanson was talking about, is that you, you, and good, and I think good credit to ICI and their builders, I think that they've
They did.
...done the best they can. And because of them having that control, we don't have that situation we have elsewhere. We have the two builders that aren't talking to each other. The worst situation is having those three-by-three-foot pads across from each other, on left side of one home, on the right side of the other, that then takes that 10-foot and shrinks it down to four feet or less. And so that what we want is we want them staggered. If we're, if you're going to have them there, hopefully you don't have them there, but if you're going to have them, have one at the front, have one at the back. And so that at least then you can have a little bit of a meander to be able to still maintain, you know, that clear area is, is what the, what I think you're, you're capturing. But ideally, you'd rather have it where they're right side, right side, right side instead of right, left, right, left.
Well, the way they, they build the houses, they're pretty much, they're different models, but they're pretty much all alike so that they can put the air conditioning unit on the same side of the house as they go down, down the road. So that, that's what they agreed to last time and it worked. So.
Is that, is that an option to make this a condition of the PUD? Would the, it was a concern previously with our?
I don't know that we can add.
I don't know.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is, is, I mean, we could come up with a separation from, you know, one unit to that, a setback, if you will, from air conditioning to air conditioning. But it is hard for us to have them on the same side of, of, of each home.
I'm assuming, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that there's a multiple amount of models, maybe three, five, four.
Oh, there's many more than that.
Right. So, you don't know where you're going to be having to put the AC, depending upon the construction of...
At this point, no. We do not, and particularly in a phase like this, where they are our larger lots, these are highly customized homes.
Yeah, right. So, you don't know where they're going to be at any time.
I do not at this time.
It's not like a cookie-cutter home situation.
But we can commit to keeping them separate by however much you deem appropriate.
Well, you'll see. You'll know. Your builder will know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've closed public comment, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion on Item 9A.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve Item 9A, request for approval of PUD site development plan in the PUD Plan Development District.
A second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hanson, and a second by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Seeing none, the motion passes. Item 9A passes. All right, we're moving on to Item 9B. This is an ordinance amending tourism development plan to temporarily reallocate the percentage distribution of tourism development tax from capital projects to beach re-nourishment. We have, I don't believe Amy is here today, so, is this a you? Is this a... Who'd like to take a stab at it?
Well, excuse me, let me just pull it up, and then we can go over it real quick.
Can I ask you a question that I read about yesterday? Has the tax gone up to 12%? I read somewhere when the state tax was going to be 12% on TDTs. No? I guess I read something else.
We're capped at five.
Maybe I was dreaming. I could have had a dream.
Five pennies.
Five pennies? I thought it was even higher.
We're capped at five, but we are trying to work with our legislative delegation to consider increasing it to the six. You'll see in some larger communities where they have a higher concentration
Yeah, there was 12.
...of tourism.
Maybe that was Orlando. Could have been Orlando.
It's possible. We're at five, which is the max, and then you have two that we are proposing to be pledged towards the beach. This is just a follow-up to our August 4th board meeting, where the board voted to table it until August 18th, because we were actually missing a member.
Imagine.
Unfortunately, we're missing another member tonight, but what we were proposing to do as part of the fiscal year '27, as you all know, the county levies the 5% sales tax, referred to as the TDT. Right now, you have one penny or 20% going to the beach. What we were proposing as part of the budget and filling the gap of our beach restoration and maintenance was to move that second penny. So, that way, we'll have 40% or two pennies going into the beach as part of the budget that we've already submitted to you for your consideration. This is just to formally incorporate those changes into the ordinance amending tourism development plan to temporarily reallocate the percent distribution for the TDT tourism development tax, to move it into the capital, from capital projects into the beach re-nourishment.
And actually, Madam Chair, since this matter was tabled from the last meeting, I'll need a motion to remove the item from the table in order for it to be discussed tonight.
All right, sir. If legal is asked, our motion to remove.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to remove it by Commissioner Richardson, and a second by Commissioner Hanson. All right, we'll go forward on it. Did we need just a majority vote on this, or?
This is the supermajority.
The supermajority?
I believe the reason why it was tabled was because we needed a supermajority, and Commissioner Dance was a no from the original, so he is the...
For the TDT?
Yeah.
But is it four people?
Well, you wouldn't have gotten a...
You could have, you could approve it with four.
You could approve it with four. It's just that with Mr. Dance there, his commitment was to TDT, not to, not to push forward.
So, he could have been a no today.
Right, but he wanted to have a full board to discuss it, and then, because he was not going to be.
Well, if you wish, it's your prerogative, you may table this again because of the circumstances. However, with the second table, we may need to re-advertise this.
No, if it's not a supermajority...
Right, so...
I don't think it's a supermajority, if you...
No, because we're not proceeding forward under, I don't think so, and I don't think we're proceeding forward.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was just, at the time, there was only four here, and you wouldn't have gotten a vote one way or the other, or something along those lines, so, because of his involvement.
So, when would we be voting on this next?
If you were to table it tonight, you would have to designate the next meeting date and time, so that way, that public notice is being made, because we've already done the public notice, and then we moved it to tonight.
I'm comfortable going forward, if anybody else, does anyone oppose to going forward with a vote tonight on the item?
Right, and if you do vote tonight, the law is that it's a majority plus one, so in order for this to pass, it must be a 4-0 vote.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Does anyone at this time having issues with this item, or would like to wait for Chair to answer?
Anything can happen next time, too. This is going on and on again. I'd like to move ahead if we can.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the item for public comment. Let's discuss 9B, the ordinance amending tourism development plan. Ms. Robin, how are you? Good evening.
Roberta Paletta, Halifax Plantation. I have some questions. By shifting another penny from the tourist fund, development plan fund, you'll have two cents. What percentage of the total that the local government, i.e. Flagler County and the cities, have to provide or have on hand for the next replenishment phase? I think at the July meeting, it was something like $8 million, and that we needed to have in reserve. And that was when the proposed sales tax, a dedicated sales tax, or as I had suggested, a dedicated percentage of the property tax being dedicated, as opposed to pulling money from here and pulling money from there, which could vary, because who knows what the economy's going to do? Hopefully, it's going to continue being great, but if we have an economic downturn, and then we get a couple of hurricanes, and we have to come up with the funds for beach replenishment, we could be proverbially SOL. So, I guess those are my questions. We know that it's approximately $8 million that we need to have in reserve. These two cents, what will that contribute towards, and where's the rest of the money going to come from? And I apologize for not attending the workshops, and I know that you've probably had to discuss this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else? Mr. Hamilton?
Good evening. Richard Hamilton, Island Estates. When this was discussed a couple of months ago, it seemed a pretty simple thing to do, to make this reallocation, and straightforward. Now that MSBUs are back on the table, I've completely changed my mind. I was thinking about it last week. I went to the tourist development committee. It didn't have a quorum, but there was at least the budget presented. I think you should continue to table this, or postpone it, until you can have more of a discussion, because I think you're wasting an opportunity to do the temporary one-year move, when you should be doing a longer-term move. You're currently spending, one penny brings you in $880,000. Your capital project fund uses one penny, or has one penny going into it, but nothing is really being spent from it. And you have additional reserves that are available in that, should you need it. I think you should still have a capital fund of some amount, because I think it's very useful for projects to be able to come to you for seed money and local grant money. So, you should have something available in the capital fund. I think your beach fund should not be just increased from 20% to 40%, I think it should be 50% or more. It used to be 60% at one point. So, I think you should be putting more money into the beach fund, and saving that and putting that towards beach re-nourishment. That would leave an amount still in the administrative, what do you call it, operating promo advertising. But currently, your budget shows 2.6 million of revenue, and only 1.8 million of expenses. That's all you spent. Last year, you spent 1 million in expenses. You don't need all that money going into promo and advertising. I mean, I'm not suggesting you cut back Amy's budget or anything, but just look at what she spends versus the three pennies that are going in there. She doesn't need it. You don't need it. Put it to the beach. And so I think that should be reconsidered before you make a permanent vote. I mean, you can change it next month if you want, but you still need this supermajority to do it, so I think you should completely reconsider that. Look at putting three pennies into the beach, two pennies, or maybe even 30% into the promo advertising, and then a small amount left in the capital. And you have, whatever it is, you've got a fund there of about over $6 million in cash sitting around. It's designated for this eco-center, but the eco-center isn't in your capital budget even yet. So, put that off. Use that money, also some of that, for the beach. I mean, you do need a good trailhead and parking facility at the new bridge, but you don't need this eco-center yet. Put it off. So, I think you should table this motion and reconsider it, perhaps when you come back and talk about the MSBUs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments on Item 9B? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on this. You know, a lot of good points by Mr. Hamilton, particularly with the eco-tour center and the funds that are sitting there. But I will let you guys have some conversation, if you would, around this. Ms. Petito, you might want to maybe go back over specifically funding for this year for the beach, what's been allocated, and projects that we foresee for this.
I've done so many presentations, I'm actually looking for it. I know that we have 8.1 million, off the top of my head. I believe we had a million. I thought it was close to a million for carry forward, out of the current year to next year. The $880,000, moving the two pennies, would end up giving you $1,760,000 in TDT revenue. The difference that makes up the 8.1 is made up of general fund, dedicated millage, and your half-cent sales tax. I just don't have the dollar amount in front, but it is 8.1 million that we already have worked into the budget, with this 1.76 million being part of that.
Can you address the why we can't pledge multiple years out? Your spreadsheet and your chart shows three consecutive years of pledging Fund 1109. We can't do that today for all three years. We can only do it one year at a time, correct?
You're working on the budget one year at a time.
Right.
But there was a discussion at the tourist development board that the TDC board did not support doing it 100% of the two pennies every year. What they were hoping to do, and actually what they discussed, was you already have the one 20% or one penny that goes in, but to take half of that. This board, through the budget process, had discussed taking the two full pennies, which is the maximum amount by law that you're allowed to pledge towards the beach. So, I know there was some consideration, recognizing that there are a lot of challenges, and the beach isn't the only thing of importance. So, the board, this board, had discussed doing it as a one-year allocation at the full 40% or two pennies. But certainly, future years, you can change that.
You're saying we only voted for one year to do that?
Correct.
Not in perpetuity?
Correct. It was for one year, and then it would be reevaluated. And I think it was because there is maybe a little level of uncertainty, whether or not, you know, at what point the MSBU is going to kick in, but certainly, this is something that can come back to the board as we prepare the budget next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything, Ms. Carney?
Just, there is carryover in that fund. I think, again, I can't remember the exact Tourism Council discussion, but I do know that Flagler Beach, they pledged $750,000 of Flagler Beach's promenade. There's a couple of other grants out there that were not funded. It will be a year of missed funding for Palm Coast, Benel, Flagler Beach, to come to the Tourism Board, and ultimately, the B-O-C-C for a grant. So, the grants are structured, and they're 50% grants. You build whatever you're going to build, and you come back to the board, and you get paid for it. So, yes, we did decide against the Tourism Council. They did say they wanted to just give up a half, I mean, half of the fund, but this was the year that we decided that we would go with the full penny. So, what we do in the future, we can't tell you, but in this case, this is why we need this ordinance, is to move that funding at 2% as opposed to 1%.
Mr. Hanson, any comments?
Just a comment, it's not a percent, it's a cent. Madam Chairman, I move that we approve amending the tourism development plan to temporarily relocate one penny for one year of the tourist development tax to the beach project.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Hanson, and a second by Ms. Richardson. Any other comments before we vote? Since this requires a supermajority, I'd like to have the clerk do a roll call. That's okay? This is new for you, fun for you, right?
All right, so we had a motion to approve, so Chair, sorry, Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Motion moves, 4-0.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, anything else from us? Mr. Rodriguez, are we good on that?
Yes, you are.
All right, we're moving on to 9C. This is a legislative adoption of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances exempting public, semi-public, and special uses from the county's noise regulations. Mr. Mingle?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Adam Mingle, Growth Management Director. We proposed this when we were approached by Historic Church. Said they're replacing their bell, they're going to put an electronic bell system. One of the things they mentioned is, you know, we may end up being too loud. The noise limit is 70 decibels, measured at the property line. I had personal knowledge of schools that we have in the area, and I can hear their opening bell, their opening announcements from adjacent unincorporated parcels. And I can tell what they're saying, I can hear songs clearly, I can identify all that. And so I'm already thinking, we're already exceeding it. We talked about this, we advertised it, talked with the county administrator. I think you've gotten two emails, two emails about this, talking about unintended consequences. We have intended consequences here to exempt public, semi-public, and special uses. Not special exceptions, not special events, not other things that say "special" in our code. It's a term of art, public, semi-public, and special uses. And so I'm standing in front of you, telling you that really, all that we've had before, all of our schools before were public uses, before they, for the most part, were now in Palm Coast. The, you know, Benel Elementary was never one of the public uses, it was always in the city. But I'm thinking of, maybe the only one where we'll have some conflict now would be Old Kings Elementary, where we're going to have a proximate unincorporated parcel. All the others are City of Palm Coast parcels, so our ordinance isn't going to apply. All of our parks are public uses. Last one we had approved that we had that I can remember, Bay Drive Park. And so that, would it cover special events at the parks, this exemption? No. Special events would have to still maintain whatever requirements we put on them, because we're the owners of the parks. And so we could place conditions on the special events held at our parks, because we're responsible for the parks. Trying to think of what else we'd have, special uses that are there. Term of art, the last special use that I remember that was in the hammock, was the lift station... station at the foot of the bridge. Not noise requirements because the machinery noise is actually exempt already from that. Special uses are also cell towers primarily in our world. So the big part I'm saying is, the threat of unintended consequences, to my knowledge, is it's the intended consequences. We want to exempt those public, semi-public, and special uses. At the same time, I want to tell you, and I want to borrow from what Commissioner Correction, City Council member Gombaro said at a recent meeting that I attended, that said, you know, maybe the juice isn't worth the squeeze. I don't know if I've got the heart to fight for this. We were talking about it kind of briefly, a little sidebar saying, enforcement-wise, we know legitimately that if you didn't pass this, either we decided we're just not going to do this, we, maybe, maybe you deny it, you know, that are we going to go out and chase after a church that's playing Christmas carols and that happened to be doing it for 20 minutes? By the time the sheriff gets there with the decibel meter, the noise is probably done. Are we going to chase the school that has the announcements? Probably not. Special events, again, being something special, I mean, that's, that's special event. We'll have the requirements there that we'll enforce it. Those tools are in the toolbox already. Those are not exempt from this. So with that bit that I'm sharing with there, with you, we did take this to the planning board. Planning board reviewed it and said, yeah, we're in favor of it. But same time, if you choose not to take any action on it, or you choose to deny it, it's not going to probably hurt my feelings much, and I think our church that's intending to put up the electronic bell will still do just fine. So with that, I'll close. Wait any questions or comments. Certainly, open it up for public comment. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
I'd like to leave this side. On that note, I do live behind a church that has a school. Lots of elementary's kids on parks and swings. They're in my back window, over my canal. And they used to have church bells, and they also had festivals. And I could hear "New York, New York" at 10 o'clock when they started to shut it down. And it was pretty much in my bedroom at that point. So I think it happens regardless, I'm not against this, but regardless of what we do, we don't have officers walking around with machines. We had barking dogs on canals that go across the canals. Whereas the ability to control this, I'd like to have a basis of it so it's, people learn to be respectful to their neighbors, if at all possible, to eliminate personal fights, because that happened too in Palm Coast too many times. So I've learned to live with it. Now they don't have it, now I sort of miss it. The carnival rides, all the things that they had. So we can do this, but in my opinion, it's going to happen probably, and not necessarily meaning to be harmful to anybody. It's in the entertainment of folks, in the lifestyle of people. And that's part of the thing, I think, that keeps our community together rather than apart. So it's, I have to be middle-of-the-road on that, but I'm the most abused with it. And I learned to enjoy it and respect that it was there, and I'm glad they stopped at 11:00. That's all. So I have to say something. When you talk about the church, I got it all, but, you know, that doesn't include the traffic. So we'll leave it at that.
I kind of think this falls in the category of overreach. We've got a good noise ordinance in place for the unincorporated. And with that, we have solved some problems that we had with noisy neighbors and things like that, and the unincorporated. And I think we've, we've done enough as a government to kind of, to do what's our job. And this just seems like a little bit over the top.
It's hard to get anything enforced anyways with the noise. I'd be hard pressed to see the sheriff's office enforcing a church bell. So I'm not, not particularly, one, concerned about the bell, but two, also the need to push this forward. If anything, sometimes I think the noise ordinance in totality needs to be reviewed again because it seems to have an issue with enforcement to anything that gets called out on it. So I think that's one of those things we almost need to look at next year.
Yeah, it's, it's almost like the fireworks thing. We have an ordinance against fireworks, but unless the deputy sees it, they can't enforce it.
It doesn't exist.
So it doesn't exist.
Vanilla ice there until 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And then we also have some noise on the highway, too.
Sure.
And we can't avoid that at all without noise walls. And that's disturbing for several people, too.
So Madam Chairman, I move we deny the adoption of the ordinance amending the code of ordinance.
Okay. So we have a motion to deny it. Any second?
I'll second.
Any second. I'd like to go out to public comment on this matter. We're going to go to public comment on 9C, the adoption of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances exempting public, semi-public, and special uses from the county noise regulations.
I have seen, Jane Jantil, I have seen the county waste valuable time and tax money on nonsense. You know, what is this public, the public? What do you say? Oh, you're having, you got it approved, you paid your $100 so you can make all the noise you want and ruin the lives of your neighbors? This is discriminatory. What happens when I find my long-lost relatives in Israel and Belarus and Russia, and I invite 300 people to my house? Are the cops going to come because the sheriff, because it's not, my house is not a public place? I salute Greg Hanson for once. Just deny it. This is nonsense.
Yeah. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion to deny by Mr. Hanson, a second by Ms. Richardson. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of denying item 9C, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the item 9C is denied. Stop crying. You're going to make me cry. Sorry.
Sorry.
All right. 9D, you may just see the sunlight yet.
I know, I know. I had the 6:30 in the pool, by the way. That's too late now.
Well, Mr. Seeger, his vote count sucked up my time.
Yeah. Took him, took all the time.
All right. Item 9D, this is a legislative adoption of an ordinance amending the subdivision regulations as provided in the Flagler County Land Development Code to provide for plat approval by an administrative authority as required by Senate Bill Number 784.
Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director, this one's a little more needed. And so unfortunately, I wish I had a better report on this. This, though, I think, isn't too bad because this is actually a solution to an issue we've had a bit of. So that we've had some concerns before plats coming forward. Admittedly, we've brought these to you. We've told you, these are more or less ministerial in nature. And then we've had that iteration of public comment that sometimes has led to the, well, how come we have density that's now being discussed, that had actually been discussed in some cases 10, 12, 15 years ago. Cases of DRIs are already, it's already baked into the development. And so then you have that talk again at this point when you're talking about plating the lots, where really, those decisions have been made in many cases by previous boards. And so this, then, from the legislature, is maybe a good preemption. It came back and said, you designate this administrative authority. All governments have to do it. It's going to take the control of the plat approvals out of the governing body's hands. One thing that's unique for us, and I wrote this up this way, and my intent is true to that, and I've talked about it in the staff report, and again, here, your pud control, just as we had just now, site plans are still there. Site plan is greater than five acres. Less than five acres still done by planning board. And so you have those happening already that, that's our LDC setup, site plans. But waivers of subdivision requirements still have to come to the board. Dedications of public lands still have to come to the board so that you're not going to have an administrative authority who's going to be taking public streets and/or public parks dedications. You still have to have that. Those are, those are reserved authorities of the Board of County Commissioners. Those are still in here. The only thing that happens now, administrative authority, we were talking about informally here, what we would do is, we would provide then some update to the board, either as a memo or an email, or as part of the administrators' comments, that would reflect how many plats we have that we're handling administratively. So we would report to you how many we have in the hopper for preliminary or for final that are coming forward. So you'll know of what that volume is, and there won't be any surprises. The other part about this, and just for the record, all the other requirements that are still there are still there. You've got to make sure there's water and sewer available. None of this ends up taking away any of those requirements by saying there's an administrative authority. We still have to have all the things we need for the plats in order to have them accepted by the county and recorded. With that, I'll close. Wait any questions or comments. Legislative item, just like you had already, no disclosures. So this is a little easier for you. You can kind of follow our staff recommendation or just vote it down, but this one, I think, we really don't have a choice on because it went into effect July 1. We likely should approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think this, it really will make it easier for us because we do, like he said, we have to rehash this because the speakers will get up and say, well, how can you possibly, well, it was approved 10 years ago. We're just kind of, okay, stamping the next step. That's all we're doing. So, yeah, I agree. I think this is a, although we sort of have to do it, but I think it's a good move.
And will that be professionals on the administrative authority? Did they determine who will be serving on that type of authority?
For the moment, I've designated myself, and it does provide or designate by the administrator. And then what we've set up so far is that it will go through the technical review committee. And so there won't be a unilateral. It'll be meeting the technical requirements as determined by TRC. I don't want that pressure on my shoulders alone, so that...
All right. Step aside. Let's do some public comment.
Thank you.
Ready for this? I'm opening a public comment for item 9D. It's legislative adoption of an ordinance amending the subdivision regulations as provided. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back, and I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that we adopt the ordinance amending the subdivision regulations as provided in the Flagler County Land Development Code to provide for plat approval by an administrative authority as required by Senate Bill Number 784, and that this be the first and final reading of this ordinance.
I'll second. All right. I have a motion to adopt and approve from Mr. Hanson and a second by Ms. Carney. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the item 9D passes. All right. It's everyone's favorite part of the evening. Thank you, sir. 10A, County Administrator Report. Anything?
I actually do have a few things to go over. One of the items I wanted to address was on consent. It was item 7G. It was the approval of the ESL properties. It included adding Marineland to the list. I don't have an issue with that, but the parcels that we were considering do contain a small wastewater package plant and a spray field. I had sent you guys an email over the weekend, kind of explaining the challenges that we have in Marineland with the UF Whitney Lab not being able to open up one of their new facilities due to water pressure and lack of wastewater. So what I was looking to do is seek approval from the board, if you're okay with us doing our due diligence, to have an outside engineering firm evaluate the condition of that current system, and then provide some options to us so that if we are looking to purchase the property, we know what we're up against as far as whether or not we would look to remove the system, whether we need to rehab it, maybe build a master lift station, do a interconnect to Palm Coast, or whatever options are out there. I'm not looking for us to get back into the utility business. That's not it at all. But if we are to acquire the property, I think removing the wastewater off the barrier island makes a lot of sense. As you recall, we're running that backbone sewer from, was it Jungle Hut? Now it's up to Malacampera. The next phase will be going from Malacampera all the way up as far north as we can go. It may be an opportunity to work with the state and UF to further advance that backbone line and include some sort of a booster pump up in Marineland. So I'm just looking for approval from you, if you guys are okay. I don't think that the spending amount is going to be outside of my authority for the outside engineer, but if you guys are okay with me taking that approach.
Yeah, I think so because they, you know, they have good water pressure until it goes into Jacoby's Plant, and then they don't. It doesn't make any sense. It makes no sense at all. So, yeah, I think we need to look at that.
Do you have an idea of what the cost will, should run, roughly?
I don't know. My spending authority is $100,000, so I can go up to $100,000 without needing board approval. We'll know more. I'm just looking for consensus for us to even go forward to start it. We would reach out to our GEC through our engineering department. They're already under retainer. It would just be giving them a task order to look at this system so that we know what we're dealing with when we're trying to acquire the property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my question. This does not mean that we're going to buy Marineland 35. It's just on the list, the A-list.
It's been on the list. We've actually been talking to, probably for the last two years, North Florida Land Trust had reached out because the owners of the property were looking to sell off the property. So right now, there is some work that's being done through North Florida Land Trust where you have Florida Forever Program, which runs through DEP, looking to acquire a section. UF Whitney Lab is looking to acquire a section. And there's two parcels that we would look to acquire. It's my understanding that the seller of the property is not interested in piecemeal, that it's kind of like an all or none. So I don't want us to be the roadblock in moving forward for UF Whitney Lab or DEP. And that's why I want to do the due diligence to see what we have before we get too far down the road.
Yeah, that was my question. Do we want to be in the wastewater business again? So...
I'd say no.
Yeah. Right. So, yeah, we have to figure out what our strategy would be on that.
So it's really just to further advance that, if the board's okay. And if it exceeds 100, it has to come back to the board anyways.
I'm okay with it.
The other one I wanted to let you know, staff's been working with the City of Benel. And this was providing comments on the reserve at Hall Creek Development. Based on the meeting that staff had with them last Friday, it appears that all of the county's concerns have been addressed and are contained within the new amended development agreement. This was for donation of land for a public safety site. It includes the construction of a fire station, some equipment donation, stormwater, floodways, and road impacts. The comments that I have from staff is that everything seems to be ironed out. The applicant and the City of Benel have asked for staff to be present at their next meeting, which is August 25th, to show their support. Rather than say, we support the project, I think it's probably more appropriate for staff to receive direction from this board and simply state that the county's concerns have been addressed by the development order. Not that we support the project one way or the other, but just that our concerns have been addressed through the amended development agreement, if that's something that the board can provide direction on.
So wouldn't you say that they've agreed to build a fire station or just provide land?
Both. So when you look at the new development agreement, and we just got it back today, it was worked on on Friday and then provided to us kind of late today, but what, from what I remember, it was the donation of property. It included 7 million to construct and 3 million for equipment, but it was tied to today's dollars and whatever CPI would take effect. So if you built it in, say, five years, they would factor in whatever that inflation factor is. There's other language in the agreement that spells out response time. So if the development were to get to a point that we could not meet the NFPA standard for response times, it could trigger a second station, and that's factored into this new agreement with them. So...
And then, any roads that are dirt that they're going to be using will be their responsibility to pave, correct?
Correct. The only road, I believe, that it impacted was Black Branch, I think is the name of it. It's kind of like a U. We would end up conveying the road to the city. The city would then work with the developer to improve it, but it would get us out of maintaining a road that's going to be located within the City of Benel.
Were those the only two issues, the road and the fire department?
You had the public safety site, the construction, the equipment, stormwater, and floodways were the other two. And I can have Adam come up. He's been part of it, along with Legal, that has been working with the city's staff, if you have direct questions.
At this point, he's, he's all right with what the development agreement says?
Yes.
Do you know if they, Adam, did they use the new State of Florida, darn it, the new guidelines for the wetlands? guidelines for the wetlands? Is this a wetland area? Is this all upland?
Adam Engel, Growth Management Director. It does have significant wetlands. They are agreeing to protect the wetlands. Our concern was more, at least more recently, was development within the floodway. And so we had added language that would prohibit development within the floodway and especially then placement of essential services within the floodway. We do also realize FEMA maps are kind of at best written on a napkin. They do have the ability to potentially amend those maps. We do think that's unlikely when it comes to floodways. Usually when they're mapped, they're mapped with very good precision. And so that was our concern. I think you may be talking about the, maybe we had mentioned like an additional free board requirement that coincided with additional stormwater requirements through the district. And we were told by the city that they've had a separate but equal language requirement. I think that, I'm going to quote it wrong, so I'm hesitant to do it, but I think it requires an additional two feet of elevation within any of their ponds to accommodate that extra capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
You're not, yeah, so the verbiage back to the, we're not necessarily approval of this development, just that the agreements are there that satisfy what we've been asking.
Correct. Rather than say that we support the project, we're just going to say that our concerns have been ironed out in the amended development agreement.
Is the equipment defined too, or is it?
It's referred to, I think, as fire EMS equipment, and it does have a $3 million value also linked to the, $200,000 and linked to a CIP.
There's no annexation in any of this land, right?
No, ma'am. It's already presently within the city limits.
City of Benel. And there's no, I mean, what we've ironed out with them, they didn't have to do, they're willing to do, correct?
Arguably, I think that there is a nexus of requirement because of the impacts, especially on the fire side. Because of our firemen are local, I think that's probably the biggest concern we had is because we are the fire provider for Benel. And so I think I'm safe to say, and not again attempting to speak for the chief, but, you know, our concern is going to be maintaining our ISO rating. And they seem very, very attentive to that, and I think that their $7 million, $3 million split reflected that.
Nothing said about manning it, though. We will, that'll fall on us.
Yes, sir.
And is that $3 million, does that cover a fire engine or two?
I think that was the, I think that's where, I think that's where the math was coming from. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Might want not to go too far, Adam. The next one was to share that after our transmittal to the state, staff decided to withdraw our comp plan. This follows comments that were provided to Orange County on their submittal. So we, as staff, we're going to continue to work with Department of Commerce staff to eliminate any changes or policies that appear to be burdensome.
Really? So what kind of comments were coming back to Orange County?
So, Orange County got a response back, and we were going to try to get a copy of it, but in the end, our meeting with Department of Commerce staff happened before we could get a copy of their response. And in discussing it with the Department of Commerce planning staff, they showed us Section 28 to the Senate Bill 180. Go back and you can look at it. And they pointed out the language. It says, paraphrasing wrongly, but you'll get my meaning, "Thou shalt not propose or adopt that which is more restrictive or burdensome." And so they pointed and said, you neglected that word propose. You know, by transmittal, we had said, well, that's okay. We were going to transmit, and then we were going to kind of cull the group. And what we would ultimately adopt would be something that would remove those more restrictive, more burdensome goals, objectives, and policies. And the staff at the state said, well, you know, that's nice, but you couldn't even propose that. And so that's the identical comment that they're giving to most of the jurisdictions statewide that are in that transmittal phase, that, you know, the language, plain text of the bill says that you're not able to propose this. And so that we, in effect, we couldn't have even transmitted that transmittal was invalid. So they said, you can either withdraw it, or you can be prepared for us to come back and tell you, you shouldn't have done it. Legitimately, you know, we know, and just for the record, Department of Commerce and the planning staff are only to review amendments for consistency with the state comprehensive plan. But they're pointing out this section really was pointing out something that, the theory was, you shouldn't have done this in the first place because you couldn't have because of the retroactive nature of the statute going back and...
Yeah, because, yeah. So what's the violation, I mean, what's the penalty to us if we violate by submitting something with proposals? Worst-case scenario, they red-line it, or is it?
Worst-case, wag the finger, you know, bad stuff, you know, shouldn't have done it. You know, you think the lions and tigers and bears, we've always had it where the threat's been finding your plan not in compliance, but we have a valid plan at this point, and so we have a spot to fall back on. We don't have an invalid plan. And so, you know, typically, if your plan's not in compliance, then you're talking about revocation potentially of state revenue sharing. You know, that's the bad scenario, but that's not a penalty where we're at. The one problem for us is that we had, we raised it with them. We said we had timing related to the local adoption of the water supply plan. If you remember, we had done that as a separate step. The Water Management District came back and said, we shouldn't have done that. We couldn't have done that unless we were actually amending a larger part of the plan. You can't do a water supply plan amendment as a standalone. And so they were saying that was invalid. And so that's the one piece we have that's hanging out there right now at this point is a lack of an approved local water supply plan. And that truly has no penalties that are expressed within the statute. It's just one of those things that if you don't do it, then you didn't do it. And especially even more so since we're not a water provider. But that's one of those that we've talked to the district staff, you know, we have every intent. They've given us comments on what we've submitted. And then further, to belabor the point, we're going to work then next month or two, plan right now with Department of Commerce staff, identify the restrictive and more burdensome language, take those out, and still hope for something in the next legislative session that's going to fix this, and then go back and amend the plan again to adopt it. With your direction, if you don't want us to follow that path, we could just shelve this and then wait hopefully until something happens very soon, which it sounds like it will happen very soon, and then just retransmit the entirety, save us all the effort, and we just, you know, wait until January, February and transmit. We can also, in the meantime, nothing says we can't not work on our Land Development Code update. I mean, we know where we're at. We could start that, it's just the only problem is we can't adopt because any of those adoptions or proposals, maybe make sure I fix that, proposed or adoption, would be restrictive or more burdensome and would be then prohibited.
I almost prefer to shelf it and work on our LDC.
Be more efficient.
And see where we can get. I really don't, you know, we made some meaningful...
We didn't intend to get this direction from you, but that's perfect.
Sorry. We made some meaningful headway. Now we know what to go and advocate for.
It would...
There will be changes to 180.
Yes.
Maybe through courts, maybe sooner through...
Maybe sooner rather than later.
Maybe sitting on our documents for a while.
Yeah, I agree.
And now Mr. Dance isn't here, and he loves this topic most, but he might agree with us in spirit. I feel you. So, can I get a consensus maybe to shelve, submittal? And you got it.
I think it's a good idea.
Forward, absolutely. Ms. Carney, okay, have a consensus.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And just a couple more things. We've been meeting with the Emergency Communications Director, the 911 Dispatch Director over there on their transition plan. We anticipate them coming over the end of September, so they'll actually come over before October 1st, just because of how our payroll lines up. So we'll be onboarding about 28 new employees, just working through some of the differences in their compensation and benefits. It is a little bit different than ours. There is some additional software that we would need to acquire as part of the accreditation process. It's nothing significant or nothing that we can't work through together with them. I think nonetheless, I think they're excited to come over, and we're excited to have them coming on board. So that's going extremely well. And then last week, you may have seen, we had a great meeting with Congressman Fine to garner his support for the Army Corps feasibility study as well as helping put some pressure on FEMA to get our CATG stuff signed. It had been approved. It's been sitting on somebody's desk for about two months. So he committed to going back to DC and moving that forward. So we look forward to that. And the meeting, as I said, it went extremely well. We expected his Legislative Affairs Director to come back this week and receive the same tour, and so that he can get a better understanding of what the challenges are related to the Army Corps study. And so we look forward to hosting him again this week. So that's it. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, your first report.
My first report. Well, I've survived one week. Now I know where things are, and some, most of the things are working. On a practical aspect, I've been trying to restructure and reconfigure the county attorney's office to make it more efficient. And one of the first steps, and you guys are going to see the results of that, I know I've already spoken with administration and the department heads have already been notified, but what I've done is I have assigned departments to a specific attorney. So now this is a much more efficient, we don't have any duplication of efforts. So a department will have a specific assistant attorney or myself. They will be the primary contact and their primary attorney. So if a department needs legal assistance on a matter, they have the one attorney there to call. The matter will still, I will still be supervising the two of them. I am still the liaison between the board and the office. You guys still funnel through me. I will funnel through them. But that's the first step, trying to kind of reconfigure our office to run as a much more efficient unit. I'm also working with them now. We're going to, I want to deep dive into all of the outstanding files and cases we've got, see where we're at, and trying to get everybody to, we don't necessarily have an electronic file management system, but I think I've called my old colleagues from our neighbors to the south who have given me my, our old-fashioned spreadsheet file management system to implement for all of us, the three of us in the office, to list all of our cases, where it's at, so that I can keep a running kind of almost real-time status on all of our cases, all of our matters. It also makes it much easier to report to you either on a monthly or quarterly basis what it is that our office is doing. And then year-end, you'll have a full report of, you know, here are all the cases we've handled, here is the amount of litigation we've held, here is all the real estate contracts we've done. So we can kind of quantify all of the aspects of our office. I'm trying to kind of streamline it, make it much easier where it's just, I can just bang out reports to you guys so you can actually see what the county attorney's office is doing. So that's most of my first week, trying to just figure out where everything is, who everybody is, and that things work. So far, it's been great, and I hope to continue the process along the lines.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. We're going to go back out for our final community outreach. This 30-minute time period has been allotted for public comments for items not on the agenda.
How refreshing to hear Mr. Rodriguez say he's going to get the disorganized office in order. What I'm going to tell you today, I did not contact Attorney Rodriguez. He's brand new. I didn't want to involve him in this. He has nothing to do with this issue. I think it's pretty disgraceful when a commissioner tells a citizen, don't call me anymore, and a county assistant county attorney, Mr. Moylan, says, I accursed him because I told him that the debris of the Old Dixie Hotel, which has been sitting there since March 28th, with a gate open, is adjacent to a single-family subdivision of 70 homes, next to an ice cream parlor, a restaurant, a gas station that serves food, and across the street from 5,000 people during hurricane season. Well, I finally, when Sean Moylan said, and he should be fired, their permit is legal, it took Harriet Castle and me less than two hours to discover that the entire permit was 100% illegal. We are now working, the health department came out the next day and took pictures, John Bay, and he's going with his attorney. We contacted FDEP. I had three phone calls with them today. I sent them the entire permit file. There is nothing in the permit file that is accurate. Any building that was built before 1978 has to be inspected for asbestos. What they did in the building department, they took an asbestos report from 2023 on the restaurant, which was a separate building, and I spoke to the surveyor. Page one of his report says, this is only the restaurant and lobby. It has nothing to do with the hotels. But that's what's in the file. Nothing was sent to DEP, which is a state and federal violation. The site plan, as I said, also showed, as well as the asbestos report was the wrong report. They never filled out the form. They never sent anything to FDEP. They didn't even fill out, I don't know how to use that thing after all these years. I guess I'm getting too old. The permit application doesn't even list the square footage, didn't have a date, didn't bother saying if it was residential or commercial, didn't list the square footage, didn't list anything, and we don't even have an address of the contractor, who I don't even know if he's legal. So here are two citizens who have done all the work, and you know what? We've gotten response from the state health department and the state Department of Environmental Protection, and not one response from one commissioner. I think this is terrible. The Department of Health was out there twice. John Bay, he's the one who got us going in 2018 when Scott Simon refused to go out.
You missed you.
Okay, but the hotel, the pool was full of rats. The glass was there. The county, to this moment, has done nothing. So I'm working with the state and maybe the governor's office. It's disgusting.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Mr. Johnson? Oh, no.
Ron Long, Auto Drive. Just real quick, the only thing I wanted to bring up, I noticed the other day, I saw that some turtles are kind of putting a damper on the construction going on out there. I remember, I think, that the money that was given by the TDC to the beach for the promenade has a time limit on it. Is this now going to jeopardize that money? I mean, do we know? Because that's, yeah, just free money going around, so.
Peter Johnson. I just wanted to give you guys a huge thank you for purchasing 3,800 acres of land. Oftentimes, it doesn't get talked about conservation enough, and I just wanted to follow that up by just because we purchased conservation land, the work doesn't stop there in order to conserve it. There's a lot of active management practices that have to take place, a lot of things across the board that have to take place as well. To pivot onto SB 180, I understand that there's some things in the works. I understand that there's some litigation that's probably going to be taking place soon. My concern is that we need to establish home rollback in the county and in the city so that we have greater control over things. Ms. Carney, I believe, said it before, we're not going to be able to stop development, but we can damn sure curtail it and make sure that it fits in our area appropriately. Once again, thank you for purchasing 3,800 acres because that doesn't, people don't realize how much 3,800 acres is and how many houses that could be that have been built. And I'll leave it with this, I also think Sean Moylan should be fired, but that's for a different reason.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Ms. Savannah?
Hi. My name is Savannah Brinkworth. So one, I want to talk about SB 180. That has been kind of a thorn in everyone's side, I think, at this point. I think we all agree on that. I don't know if you all have seen anything, but this one commissioner from, I believe, Deland?
Deltona.
Deltona. I always get them mixed up, but she has, you know, she's been really informative with this, and she's, you know, thankfully, kind of keeping us all in the loop of what's going on with that, which I think is amazing. I don't know if you guys have looked at possibly joining that class action lawsuit? No?
We'll address after your comments.
Okay. Okay. But also, I had some other concerns too, back to the reserve at Hall Creek. So I've spent a long time looking at 100-year floodplain maps, wetland maps, active floodplain maps, and there are some areas where it overlaps. I mean, give or take, maybe my margins are off a little bit, but there are some areas where that margin definitely overlaps into some spots, so I really do worry about flooding in certain areas. I don't know if I can share that with you guys on the screen?
If it's Carlos.
It's just like an image. It's just like an image. I don't know.
You'd have to put it by the, yeah, there you go. Come and see it.
And or not?
Yeah, it's just colorful.
We're looking at it outside now.
Uh huh.
I can even send this to you guys. Right now is active wetland maps. There are a few spots where it overlaps as far as wetlands go. I have these maps, but I've never really like circled them. All right, so this here is more of the, these are functional wetlands. They're actively functioning. All this is by FNAI that does all these. They have them online. Pull those up with GIS mapping. But as you can see, there's quite a few overlaps again. And I will send this to you guys in email so you can kind of get a better clarity of what is going on. And I can even change the capacity for you guys. And then one other little map real quick, I just want to. This is the 100 year floodplain map that they have on there. This area here, this whole development is actually within one of those floodplain zones there. Of course, they vary by priority as well. I believe these are like, I have all the priorities listed off to the side too, so when I send it to you, you might get a better look. But this area here, 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 here. So I just wanted to bring that up because it's a, it's a real concern, you know, flooding out new residents and old residents alike.
So what you were trying to show us there were the wet, the floodplain map overlaps the wetlands. That's what you were trying to do?
So what I was showing you is I've overlaid the reserve at Hawk Creek. So I've taken a long time kind of pinpointing it. And there were three maps. There is functional wetland maps. There is the floodplain map and the wetland map.
And you're just showing where they overlap?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we'll address some of these questions really quickly. The turtles, the turtles do not impact the grant timeline. Once the timelines are, or the timeframe is up, if they don't build it, then the funds would come back to the county on that. Right, right. So right, we, we don't have any intention of extending on the promenade, the TDC. I think it's.
It would probably depend on the TDC board.
Yeah.
Come back to the TDC.
We come back to the TDC if they don't have the number. SB 180, we talked about it in our workshop today. I did mention the commissioner from Deltona had a lot of good points. We are going to send those over to Legal from, that she provided. We will be, they'll flesh them out and then we will be adding them to our position that we will present to our local legislative body. So to Senator Leake. And we'll speak very specifically of these issues that we have with SB 180. I think the board did talk about joining the lawsuit. There are enough counties joining and municipalities already to, to have something, make a point. We are trying to kindly push ours through our lobbyists and through ourselves, our feelings on it so that we can play nice with our Senate and, and work with them. But we have been reassured, at least I was, by Representative Greco, that they are going to plug the gaps inside SB 180 as soon as possible. So, but we are working it behind the scenes from our point because we're not happy with it. And then Mr. Johnson left, so I can talk to him later. But that, the 3,900 acres is just sort of a tip of the iceberg on conservation. We have some more. You heard Ms. Petito talk about pieces at Marineland, the Ag Museum, portions, portions of that land has been added to the list and many more that we're going to be busy, getting busy purchasing over the next several months. So I've addressed all that. We'll come on out to commission comments. I will start with you, Mr. Hanson.
Yeah, just a short one. I've, after a lot of thought, I've decided not to run again. So I'm not going to seek reelection. So there'd be plenty of time to talk about why I did this and how much I'm going to miss it. But, but it's just time. It's time for me to let somebody else do it. And I'm doing it early so that, one year early before the primaries so that the people that, hopefully, will get some good candidates, you know, to run. And so that's it. It's been a great ride, but I got an hour and, or excuse me, a year and two, a year and, a year and two months to get the beach funded. Okay? I'll be working that hard. So, but anyway, so appreciate everybody. So that's, it's done.
I'll, I'll comment last.
Jump into the other end?
Yeah, I'm going to go to you.
Wow. Well, I got to say thank you to all of your patience being here and for those who come here all the time and make your comments. I really appreciate your, your understanding, your kindness, your gentleness, and I'm very proud of this board because we have a very diverse board and yet we work together as a team at the end of the day. And I think our new attorney is going to be quite happy with us. We're thrilled to have him. And there's some new and fresh thoughts and ideas and that always helps with progress. But our hearts are all in this. So as you can see, we're very, very thankful that we have each other and I, and I have, you have to know that because we see, sometimes we see adults behaving like children and we're not children. So we're going to be grownups and do the best we can for all of you. So thank you for your time as well as the staff, great staff. And that's what I'm going to say, there's so many events coming. Watch our, go to our Facebook pastes, posts, our pastes, our posts, and you'll find out what events are about, are coming around. And we're going to try to get as much as we can out to the public. That's my goal. Thank you for coming today.
Ms. Carney?
Yeah, I, I attended the sheriff's expo. Boy, I wish they'd changed that date. Was it hot? Boy, oh, boy, oh, boy. Was it warm that day? Oh, you guys went, you were there after me?
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty hot.
I thought it was very nicely done. Again, it's just a, oof, it was hot. I just want to respond to a, an article that was on Flaglow Live from our library board and suggesting that some commissioners had not been out there or not participated. I serve on five boards voluntarily as a commissioner and we can't possibly be on every board. So that's why we split our, our time. We kind of split it up by our interests, maybe. I took a couple by default, but I, I can't possibly know everything about everything. There were some innuendos in the article that we are cutting back in Palm Coast and I, I just, I, I think there was a lot of projections going on and I'm really looking forward to getting our, our Nexus Center up and advertised. I don't know when that kickoff will be, but you know, what our hours will be, what programming we're offering. The more information I think we can get out to the public now as opposed to waiting so that we can counteract some of the budget decisions that were made. We did talk to Palm Coast at our joint meeting and we did commit to looking at any major gleaning deficiencies. Palm Coast has been the center of, the Mecca of our library program for years. Now we're introducing something new. I think it's going to take some time to change. Change is difficult sometimes, but our goal was not to deplete or diminish, yeah, what we're, what we're offering in Palm Coast. And if that's the way it came off, then I think time will tell. I'm looking for strong leadership there to provide the services that we need. But in no way, in no way can I possibly, I know there was a liaison for, and one of us is the backup liaison. There's a problem right now with the, the timing of their board meetings. We're here. I mean, we can't be everywhere and be at all of these subcommittee events. So we try the hardest we can. I didn't want to, I'll just leave it at that, but the library in no way, in my book, is, I, I think we're adding huge services with the Nexus Center and I look forward to getting that information out to the public so that we can make a much better program all the way around with, you know, two branches. And that's basically, I did come in and, and welcome, Mr., and I look forward to working with you, Mr. Rodriguez, and I'm sure anything you can add to our program again will just make us better all the way around. So welcome aboard.
All right, finally me. Commissioner Hanson. I know we got a year left to serve together, so.
14 months.
But, yeah, who's counting? You, you were there to coach me in the beginning when I had, I was clueless on maneuvers and you have always, I, I can't think of anything you have not supported in District Four. You pushed hard for Bull Creek. You pushed hard. You helped me with the special assessment. You helped me frame arguments up here. You were, you were attentive and helpful and I know that you have done a lot for your district as well. And, and it is, it is something we need to get together and, and push for to get the beach funded. And I think we all know that and we'll get there. And, but we're going to, we're going to miss you, but you can come join all the other boards. We can put you in affordable housing. We can put you everywhere, you know?
So much volunteer opportunities.
I, I just hope that the, I just hope that your district gets someone as attentive and involved as you've been for them.
That's probably the most satisfying part of the job was what I was able to do out there.
One of the things, I don't think people realize, when you get a district that's all unincorporated county or with significant issues, it is not a part time job. This is not a part time job. It is day, nights, weekends, hurricanes, holidays, trash pickup, everything else.
Yeah, I kind of thought as myself as the mayor out there.
Yeah. So, and I, and that, and what other people don't know that are thinking about running is that his people will, will pick their person. I mean, it might be a whole county voting, but they will drive who, who they want out there because they've got very specialized issues and it's important to them. So thank you for being there for our district and, and the West. And I want them to know that you are very involved in helping what we've gotten done out there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And Mr. Rodriguez, tracking action on a spreadsheet. You're speaking my love language, Excel. So I'm so glad to see that, you know, come, come for the department. And I hope for Sean and Sarah that they feel more relieved having a very dedicated swim lane to stay in. Because I, sometimes you could really feel the pain of them just being like, you know, jumping from one thing to the next, you know? So they'll have nice defined deliverables, which is really important for anybody to be successful. So we appreciate it. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
May we adjourn?
We're adjourned. Thank you, sir.